Members of council, the first order of business is the adoption of the council minutes of May 28, 2007. Have a motion please. Motion by the chair to adopt the minutes of May 20, 2008, seconded by councillor Maves. Any discussion or changes to those minutes? Having seen none, all is in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. At this time, I request any disclosures of any continuing interest in any matters with regard to the agenda this evening. Having seen none, we'll move on to the next item. We have deputations of the evening members of council. I'd like to welcome Maria Menachella and Brad Hutchings, who are directors of the Niagara Community Foundation. Will be making a presentation to update council on the activities of the foundation in Niagara Falls, including the creation of the Niagara Falls Community Fund. And tonight they'll be presenting a check in the amount of $7,300 to the Niagara Falls Art Gallery to support their work. So I'd like to invite Maria and Brad forward. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Salsi, members of council and staff. It gives us a great deal of pleasure to be here tonight to give you an update on the activities of the Niagara Community Foundation. I am Maria Menachella, and I'm doing this in my capacity as the resident of Niagara Falls and the director of the board of the foundation. I am joined tonight by Brad Hutchings, also a resident of Niagara Falls, who's our vice chair, and Liz Palmeri, the executive director. Brad and I will do a brief walk through the foundation that will be beneficial to new members of council, let you know about an exciting new initiative, our Niagara Falls Community Fund, and also to present a grant to the Niagara Falls Art Gallery. The foundation was created through the vision of the late Frank Ranssberg. His leadership contributed significantly to our success. Through his own family foundation, he became aware of the potential impact that a private community foundation could have, and rallied the community in 1999 to support the creation of the Niagara Community Foundation. We were established to link donors' legacies to their community forever, and we do this by creating endowment funds that are held in perpetuity, forever, as legacies for the community. Each year, a portion of the earnings on each fund are granted to charities, as directed by the donor on an annual basis. And since our launch in the fall of 2000, we have raised in excess of $5.3 million, held in more than 105 different endowment funds. This is a remarkable achievement, since we started in 2000 with two gifts of $100,000 each. We are grateful to many donors from Niagara Falls, who have created funds at the foundation, and in particular, I would like to thank Casino Fairs and the Niagara Fallsview Casino Resorts for their gift of $850,000 to create the Casino Niagara Fairs Fund. Since 2004, the earnings on their fund totaling in excess of $70,000 have been granted back to 21 different community projects. Since our launch, donors have set up funds to support particular charities, to support particular fields, such as the environment or children and youth, to support Niagara wide initiatives, or to support a particular community. What is important for all of you to understand is that the donations to these funds are never spent. The capital is held forever. It is just a portion of the earnings that are dispersed annually. Funds can even be established to support a particular community project. And I want to let you know tonight about a new initiative for our state that was finally established last year. We made a presentation to council in July 2004, a result of which was council's agreement to partner with the foundation to create the Niagara Falls Community Fund. Took a few years, but the fund finally came to fruition late last year. At this time, we'd like to thank Mayor Salsi and CAO McDonald for their work in keeping this idea alive and moving forward. In this particular, I would like to thank councillor Diodati for his leadership in seeing that 50% of the proceeds raised from last year's Sleep Chief were the first gifts to create this fund. The capital in this fund will be held in perpetuity, and each year, a portion of the earnings on the fund will support charities providing programs and services in Niagara Falls. Since Sleep Chief, a number of the hotel owners who've supported the event have made additional gifts to the fund. We have copies of our newly published 2006 annual report. We will be able to read not only Niagara Falls Community Fund, but our work in other cities and towns across Niagara. I would now like to invite Brad to continue his presentation.
Thanks, Maria. The Canadian country has a strong presence of community foundations. There's 155 Canadian community foundations with combined assets of approximately $7 billion, and grants totaling $137 million. The foundations work together to share information and best practices to work towards reaching their goals, but each foundation is run independently. The Niagara Community Foundation, although relatively young in age, is highly regarded among the other Canadian foundations. The Niagara Community Foundation is an enabling organization, which partners with service delivery organizations, which provide funding and strong community knowledge, all within the community. Service groups may consist of registered charities, municipalities, in a wide variety of fields, including the environment, social services, health, culture, heritage, recreation, and education program. We are very proud of the partnerships that have contributed to the successful development of the Niagara Community Foundation during the past seven years. With over $5 million in assets today, grants last year of $484,000, and a strong network of volunteers and partnerships, the foundation has a strong base to grow and further support and help the community. Volunteers are key to the foundation. The foundation has a very strong and dedicated group of volunteers. The board and the committees are made up of community leaders from across the Niagara region. Some of the volunteers from Niagara Falls include Ernie Morgan, Danny Palmer, Bill Amadio, Karen Stearns, Randy Fields, Eugene Oatley, and Ann Lloyd Bransford. The foundation provides an opportunity for donors of all sizes to provide gifts that continue forever through endowed giving. This assists donors in realizing their dreams towards building and sustaining a better community. There are many ways that the foundation can work with the residents and community groups to make a difference in the community. With your permission, I'd like to introduce the executive director of the Niagara Community Foundation, Liz Palmeri, to brief you on this.
Great. Welcome, Liz.
Thank you. I'm just going to take a few minutes to contextualize the work of the foundation, how we work with local community groups in Niagara Falls and donors. We have a number of granting programs that organizations can apply to. Our environmental grants program is one that has supported certainly a project in Niagara Falls. The Teresa Park Forest Enhancement Project took place a few years ago, and we put money into that. We have a children's summer camp fund for kids with financial need, and we've given grants to the Boys and Girls Club of Niagara and the YMCA. We have a community grants program as well. The deadline is July 27, and our applications are on the website, so if you know of local groups that are interested in applying, they should go to the website. Epilepsy Niagara, which works out of the community center on Victoria Avenue, last year received a $5,700 grant to help them promote their programs and services. You may have heard, we use the word municipalities a few times, we have given grants to local municipalities. In fact, the city of Niagara Falls received a grant, your heritage committee did, when you were publishing your centennial book. We were one of the funders for that. Small, but it was really an important project for us. In the six years that we've been awarding these types of grants, we call them discretionary grants, we've awarded $425,000 to 215 different initiatives. And it's quite remarkable when you think that in 2001, we had $9,500 to grant and refunded six projects. I just wanted to talk a few minutes before we welcomed the Niagara Falls Art Gallery, is how we can work with local donors. Certainly, we've worked with a few corporate donors in Niagara Falls, but organizations and individuals can set up funds to support a particular park, like the Teresa Park. They could support the library. We have a fund for the Niagara on the Lake Library. Somebody could create a fund for your library as well. We have donors that establish funds for their local church. We really talk to our donors about what their dreams are for their community and how we can sort of act as an intermediary for them. In each of these instances, we spend time talking with the donor about how to make their dreams come true. What I'd like to do now is to welcome a representative from the Niagara Falls Art Gallery to come up and receive a grant of $7,300 that was awarded recently to them.
Sure, please.
Mayor Salsi and members of council, I'm really pleased to be here for the Niagara Falls Art Gallery and Children's Museum to personally thank the Niagara Community Foundation for its generous support. When the foundation first supported us in 2005, we were able to launch our really popular CSI program for you. And it was an immediate success, so successful that that initial $4,000 investment translated into $20,000 in revenue in just the first year. And this year, with your support again, we can now expand that program with the purchase of some new laptop computers. Students will appreciate more and faster computers, and they'll also allow us to take the program out into the community. They should also allow us to launch some new initiatives for youth, such as digital art or multimedia programming. So the Niagara Community Foundation can be confident in its investment, knowing that it generates sustainable programs for the community. And our very sincere appreciation goes out to the foundation. In closing, I want to thank Brad and Maria for their support. It makes my job much easier, working with wonderful volunteers from the local community. I want to thank certainly the mayor and CAO for keeping the idea moving forward, and certainly for councillor Diodati for bringing it to life last year. It was really quite remarkable to see the Niagara Falls Community Fund come to life. And just to thank all of you, it's been our pleasure to really help good people do great things for your community. I've got our annual report here that I can distribute to council and staff.
Please, if you would. And Liz, if we could, we may have questions for members of council of the foundation. A member of the council would like to ask, Liz Palmeri, if there's any questions you have for her. I guess the question we probably have is the amount of the capital existing. Do you have it off the top of your head that sits for the foundation compared to Niagara?
I think it's around between $75,000 and $80,000 that are in the Niagara Falls Fund.
And I get you'd like to remind people that they can make donations throughout the year, and stock donations are exempt from capital gains, correct?
Absolutely. And they can donate online. We will be having a display set up in the lobby of City Hall that can set up tomorrow where there'll be information about the Niagara Falls Fund, and also opportunities for people to make donations as well.
Good, thank you. Councillor Diodati?
Just quickly, Your Worship, thank you very much for being here, Liz and Maria and Brad. A lot of people had asked me before, why the community foundation, what is it? And the part that they need to understand is that the money gets invested, and it's the gift that keeps on giving. It's not a one-time, give them out of fish, it's a teach them how to fish kind of idea. And it's a great thing, and Maria is always so kind to host when we need to have a luncheon or whatever we need to do to get things moving forward. And I think everybody knows everybody's plates are really full, and I really appreciate this. Group does work very hard, and they help to administer things for the Sleep Chief promotion, which helps things run more smoothly this year, and I look forward to that continuing on. So I as well want to appreciate firsthand what they do.
And councillor Diodati, we owe you a lot of thanks as well for your efforts with regard to the Sleep Chief campaign, which primarily does contribute to the foundation, I believe. And so we thank you for your efforts there. And of course, Liz, yourself, and also Maria and Brad, thank you for your efforts on behalf of the entire community. So we do appreciate your efforts. Moving on to the next order of business, we have a presentation with respect to the proposed new Boys and Girls Club of Niagara. We have individuals who will speak this evening with regard to the presentation. There are Mr. Todd Brown, who's president and principal planner with Monteith Brown Planning Consultants, along with Claire Tucker-Reed, president of Tucker-Reed Associates, and Jeff Wallace as trustee with the foundation and Boys and Girls Club. I guess Jeff will not be speaking, it will be, I understand, Joanne Head on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club. So welcome, everyone, and I'll turn it over now to Mr. Todd Brown. Welcome.
Thanks very much. I'd like to thank council for the opportunity to present this report. Our team, Monteith Brown and planning consultants, along with Tucker-Reed Associates, JF Group, and McFlan and Young Cones, another architects, undertook this work along with a steering committee made up of both the city staff, councillor, and the Boys and Girls Club. Just some overview or background, Boys and Girls Club operates out of a 47-year-old building on Colke Street, and the condition of the building has continued to deteriorate. The club has requested contribution above $5 million to replace their facility at another location. That proposal is for a 41,000-square-foot facility with a 25-meter six-lane pool, a gymnasium, licensed childcare, program rooms, and I should note that this is almost twice as much space as the club currently has. The purpose of our study, our analysis, is to assess both the facility's size, facility and space needs of the proposed facility, to assess the market viability and potential impacts of the facility on the McBain Community Center, to examine options with respect to the facility location, and lastly, to identify reasonable capital and operating costs associated with the new facility. As I mentioned, the study was led by a new facility project review committee, which had equal representation from both the city and the club. A random household telephone survey was undertaken as part of the proposal, as part of the project. As well, we consulted with the Niagara Falls YMCA during the process. In terms of our analysis, we looked at a number of areas: city's commitment, site evaluation and analysis, facility size and aquatics, capital budget estimates and project costs, annual budget and operating costs, and finally, the Boys and Girls Club fundraising campaign. So I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on each one of those. First of all, in terms of the city's commitment, the city's, the strengthening of partnerships such as the relationship with the Boys and Girls Club is a strong focus of the city's community development model. At present, the city provides an annual grant of $210,000 plus free service for the club's fleet. The community values the services provided by the Boys and Girls Club, and we know that there is an existing market and there is sufficient local demand for the club to continue to provide services. The city's contemplated investment in the facility suggests a closer working relationship with the club than currently exists, and certainly we see that as advisable. In terms of recommendations coming out of the city commitment, we believe that the city could approve one half of the capital costs to construct the new facility in principle, contingent on the following items: that the club undertake a successful fundraising campaign and secure the anticipated development contributions to garner the remainder of the capital costs for the project; that the club develop a viable business plan that establishes how the facility can be financially sustainable on a year-over-year basis; that the club assume all costs associated with it or any overruns, both in capital and operating; that the city enter into an acceptable long-term lease agreement with the club if the facility were to be built on city-owned land; if the facility were to be built on private land, that it be outside of the market area for the McBain Community Center; and lastly, that the city's contribution not exceed $5 million or $1 million a year over a five-year period; that the city honor its approval in principle for matching capital funds in a timeframe of both two years, enabling the club to complete its capital campaign; and that the project principles used as the foundation for the study for the development of collaborative relationships to utilize. I just want to go over some of the project principles, because these are very critical. At the early stages of this study, what we found is that there were varying opinions in terms of where the study needed to go, the type of relationship that both the city and the club had existing, and where they wanted that relationship to develop into. And so from the early stages, we developed a number of project principles. These are fairly lengthy, but I think they're very important. Based on the vision and mandate outlined in the club's business plan, that both the city and the Boys and Girls Club work together to ensure that the facility's operating philosophy complements the department's mandate for the delivery of public recreation services. The city will contribute up to $5 million in principle to the capital cost of construction with the balance of the necessary capital funds being raised by the club. The club and the city will commit to creating a relationship to maximize the potential for success of the new facility, in terms of fulfilling the vision and the mandate of the club, meeting certain outstanding community recreation needs, and achieving acceptable financial performance. While the facility, concept, and design will be the responsibility of the club, the city's input will be sought as much as possible to ensure that the complex is capable of meeting certain outstanding community facility and program requirements, as have been identified in the recently completed strategic plan for the provision of parks, recreation, arts, and culture. The club and the city will collaborate on an municipal program, scheduling, marketing, and business planning decisions for the new facility. Responsibilities pertaining to the activities will evolve as the relationship of the entities matures. The club will operate and maintain the facility in accordance with standards set out in the simple documentation describing the relationship between both the club and the city. We know that the Boys and Girls Club would be responsible entirely for the financial performance of the facility, and will absorb all financial risk associated with the operation. Therefore, the club will determine the merits and business sustainability of services requested by the city or others, and make decisions associated with whether or not to incorporate those requested services into their operating strategy. In terms of recommendations, that in planning the development and continued operation of the club, the city and the Boys and Girls Club meet together on an ongoing basis and work together to ensure that leisure and support needs of the community are met. It is strongly recommended that the YMCA also be included in some of the ongoing consultation and coordinating processes. That the club and the city enter into discussions with respective purchase and service agreement that sees the Boys and Girls Club deliver certain programs and services on behalf of the city in exchange for the annual funding that might include an operating contribution to the anticipated deficit. As I mentioned, we also undertook a site evaluation and analysis. As many of you know, the Boys and Girls Club already owns the site on McLeod Road that is approximately 1.4 kilometers from the McBain Community Center. The city also identified three park locations as potential locations for a new facility: AG Bridges Park, which is right across the street from the existing Boys and Girls Club; Palmer Park, which is at Stanley Avenue near the new arena site; and Kerr Park, which is between Cynex Avenue and Stanley Drive. Each one of those was identified on the map above. The, if you can see it, the X identifies the existing McBain Community Center location. In terms of our site evaluation and analysis, we developed a number of criteria that we thought were important to determine what would be a preferred location. The proposed Boys and Girls Club facility being built in close proximity to the McBain Community Center, we believe would have a detrimental impact, particularly on the pool usage and on revenue levels at both facilities. As a result, that of the four sites that we evaluated, we felt that Kerr Park is the most appropriate location for the new Boys and Girls Club facility, and as a result, we're recommending that site in our analysis. In terms of the facility size and the aquatics, and we broke those out separately, because the aquatics is very important, given that this would be the second pool in the city. The Boys and Girls Club, of course, already has a pool of a smaller scale, but we did want to look at both the pool and then the other amenities. Currently, the Boys and Girls Club has a membership that has increased by 63% since the year 2000, and program registration numbers are on the rise after a temporary decline. That temporary decline happened immediately after the Y was built. Since that time, the numbers have increased. Future membership will not be realized through population growth. Both the child and teen population numbers are expected to decrease by approximately 9% over the next five years, after which they will stabilize. The Boys and Girls Club and the Y both compete for the similar market share. Currently, they each provide approximately 1,500 swim lessons. Both are projecting increases in numbers, and both are competing to attract the same age groups. The club has proposed a 25-meter-lane pool. There is capacity, we note, in the McBain Community Center for additional recreational swimming and lessons, in combination with the Boys and Girls Club's bearing description. Licensed childcare is an integral part of the club's operation and generates money to offset other costs associated with running the facility. The 41,000-square-foot proposed club is not financially sustainable, in our opinion, nor is the facility's size necessary to serve the club's needs. Opportunities do exist, however, to scale back the facility, reduce or eliminate certain spaces. We're recommending that the club reduce the size of the facility from the 41,000-square-foot footprint that they identified to somewhere in the order of 30,000 to 33,000 square feet, of which no more than 2,000 square feet would be pool surface area, and this would be reflected in a revised business plan that they were prepared. That the Boys and Girls Club reduce the pool size to a 20-meter, approximately 20-meter leisure pool type concept. Based on our capital costing estimates, we believe that the current 41,000-square-foot facility would be just under $12 million to construct, having included site development costs. This estimate is in current-year dollars and will likely increase over time. This is approximately $2.67 million more than the club's initial estimates. Part of this discrepancy may be attributable to the difference in construction approaches, as well as the quality of materials. By reducing the size of the pool on its own, we believe that a savings of somewhere around $1.05 million could be attained. Relating to that, the recommendation is that the club refine its capital budget estimates in its business plan based on the requirements of a scaled-down facility. Costs of inflation and potential financing impact must also be assessed. That an independent consultant be retained to establish specific design guidelines to ensure that the quality of the facility is of a decent quality. With regard to the annual budget and operating costs, the proposed facility is estimated to have an annual operating deficit of approximately $201,000 in its first year of operation. That is taken into account the city's current contribution on an annual basis. Without the city's contribution, this figure would likely increase to somewhere around $420,000. By reducing the size of the pool, our analysis suggests that approximately $102,000 per year could be saved on the operating budget. Again, when we look at scaling down the facility, further savings could be had. The city and club must be prepared to address the operating deficits in the proposed facility as the population will not grow, and as a result, will not generate the revenue to fully offset the expenditures over time. Annual increases in the city's grant allocation to the Boys and Girls Club may be needed and should be discussed right at the outset of the project. Recommendations that the Boys and Girls Club and the city recognize and plan for the potential of increasing operating deficits at the proposed center over time due to limited net increases in the child and youth population. The city should prepare to reevaluate the level of annual funding, currently at $210,000 per year, plus assistance on the club's fleet that would be required to support an increase in annual operating deficit of a new facility. We're recommending that the club revise its business plan to more closely align future increases in usage beyond the first year of the facility's operation with the city's demographic forecast. That the operating budget projections of the club, club's business plan be realigned and refined to reflect the downsized building envelope, increases in occupancy costs, and achievable revenue, as noted in our report. This revised operating budget must be provided to the city for review. That the club works towards developing actual costs for delivering each program-type of service, including both direct and non-direct costs, in order to develop a pricing model and alternative revenue sources. And that the Boys and Girls Club commit to an annual contribution to the reserve for capital repairs and refurbishing. In the first year of, first three years of operation, we're recommending that this level be approximately 1% of the construction cost. Beyond that, 1.5% per year. Lastly, the last topic that we looked at was the club's fundraising campaign. The capital campaign is, we believe, quite aggressive at $3 million. There is also an indication that in-kind and development contributions of approximately $2 million would be to be achieved by the organization. We have not been able to validate that at present. However, these contributions really cannot be assessed until the city provides its in-principle commitment to the $5 million. That the Boys and Girls Club revise its funding strategy based on the recommendations of the report is our final recommendation. We'd be pleased to answer any questions of council, and I'll ask Claire to join me for any specific questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Claire, are you going to make a presentation as well?
No, Your Worship, you included my part of the presentation.
Great. Members of council, do you have any questions for either Mr. Brown or Claire Tucker-Reed? I guess councillor, I don't know.
No question, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank you. I had the opportunity to be a part of that committee, and it was a great learning experience. I was very glad to see the recommendations come out of it. I was very glad to see the polling results from the I was very glad to see the polling results from the survey that they did, and I thought that was information we needed a couple of years ago that I'm thrilled that we have now. And I'd like to reserve my way to speak till after the other presenters are speaking, and I'd be happy to move the recommendations.
Okay. Thank you very much. And an hour of sensation from the Boys and Girls Club. Join Het. Claire. Welcome.
Your Worship, Mayor Salsi, and members of city council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today with respect to the feasibility study that was prepared by Monty Brown Planning Consultants. With us today are several board and staff members and volunteers, and I'd also like to thank them for attending tonight and their support. We'd like to thank the entire team at Monty Brown, all the club representatives and the city representatives, and Councilor Iannoni, who worked on the review committee. I'd like to thank them very much. They will very much help us move forward on this most important project, which, of course, is a new Boys and Girls Club for the city of Niagara Falls. As an overall comment on the work completed, the study represents a very valuable resource to the Boys and Girls Club that we can use as a reference, not only for this project, but for similar projects in municipalities throughout the region, and for that, we are very grateful. Since the onset of developing a new Boys and Girls Club, the studies that have come forward have indicated that there's tremendous support in the community for this project. And the feasibility study once again confirms that the community values the services provided by the Boys and Girls Club, that the club plays an important role in our community, that there's a need to replace the existing facility, and that there's a role for the city in funding that facility. The club considers the number-one recommendation of consultants to be the most important, and that specifically would be that city council approves support of this project in principle up to 50% of the capital cost. As recommended in the study, the club is prepared to secure the remainder of the capital required, revise the business plan, assume the potential overruns, and build on those very important project principles to establish a mutually acceptable ownership and lease agreement. The study indicates that a new Boys and Girls Club is needed and can be viable, but with careful consideration given to budgets and location. With respect to the balance of recommendations, Boys and Girls Club had forwarded members of city council a communication piece expressing the club's significant interest in confirming the viability of the A.G. Bridges Park as a potential site. The communication piece also expressed the club's commitment to stay within capital and operating budgets while obtaining the best value for dollars possible. Endorsement of this project in principle tonight by the members of council would represent an enormous milestone in moving forward on this project and would represent strategic investment in the kids of the city. The Boys and Girls Club supports moving forward with the city of Niagara Falls, and we'd like to thank again the consultants and also to members of council and your worship for allowing us the opportunity to speak to this report.
Thank you, Joanne. Any questions of Mrs. Het, Councilor Fisher?
No questions. I just want to say, over the many, many years, I volunteered and taught at the Boys and Girls Club and totally enjoyed myself being part of the programs. And in the past two years, I've been part of the Christmas turkey dinner that you presented to any, any young person who wishes to participate, and it's a wonderful evening. And the Niagara Falls Community Feels and Service not only provide, but assist also. And I've been part of several of the programs that you've had there just to observe in the past two years. And I know you have a great membership, and you're doing a great job in the community. You have a bus that goes and picks up children. You provide in the Village of Chippewa program, so that everything is there for the young people, especially the ones who don't have the means to go to more expensive programs. So when the time is ready, and Councilor Iannoni is going to make the motion, I'd be happy to second it.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mrs. Het. We appreciate your attendance this evening. Thank you. Remember, the council, we have before us a report 2007-15, and we do have a Director of Public Works here, and we wish to make some comments, I'm sorry, Director Parks and Rec, I should say, and we wish to make some comments. Denise Morrissey, do you wish to make any comments, Denise?
Yeah, Your Worship, just to clarify, obviously, the recommendations on behalf of the staff, and we were a great part of this analysis with the team, are itemized for you. Just to clarify, though, that some of the recommendations are quite specific, and I would draw your attention to C, which lists some of the things that you think are fundamentally critical to the revised business case. Wanted to emphasize I, and I think that's been reiterated by both the consultant team as well as the Boys and Girls Club in their follow-up commentary. The second was that the revised operating budget, from staff's perspective, needs to draw to your attention the consideration of any net operating increase that the city would be considering and that we have qualified that based on the $220,000 per year that we would expect as staff outside of the director of council, that that would be held at a minimum or not significantly increased. Right now, whereby you go from $210,000, even by reducing the pool cost from $109,000, you still would be looking at an $80,000 to $100,000 minimum increase in $2,007. And obviously, the capital inflation in the construction industry, depending on when this would be built, would have a bearing on long-term operating costs. So that was critical to draw to your attention. This was fully itemized in the consultant team report, but it's been highlighted by staff. The other thing that was critical to us as well was a revised fundraising strategy in terms of validating the $2 million in-time contribution. At staff, we feel that we are in a very competitive environment in our community, not only in Niagara Falls, but regionally. We have a number of high-profile fundraising initiatives that will all be vying for the very necessary dollars to support community initiatives. So putting that in context is critically important, we think, to the long-term viability of such an expensive and large investment on behalf of the community. So the only other change would be D. Our consultant team had recommended, and originally staff had concurred with that assessment, that Kerr Park was the most valued site in terms of the merit. However, in reconsideration of that and acknowledging the long-term history of the Boys and Girls Club and community, we would agree that the only stipulation that staff in the report have itemized would that it not be at the McLeod Road, as the consultants have shown through the analysis which staff agreed with. There would be a number of concerns. I think the analogy that we kept carrying through the assessment in our team was that you wouldn't build two firehouse beside each other, and you wouldn't build two community centers or two libraries. So we were trying to balance, from staff's perspective, that type of assessment. So the three other sites that were remaining on the list, and these were the three that staff had recommended, were Kerr, Palmer, and A.G. And as Boys and Girls Club, I think, have mentioned, that they're very receptive to A.G. Bridges being seen as the future home of their new facility. And that would conclude staff's comments.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morrissey. We do have questions. I think, Councilor Iannoni, you raise your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not questions, just statements as council representative on that committee. I was abundantly clear when they brought up the operating deficit, how acceptable council would be to perhaps a request for, at that point, it was double the money. And I thought I spoke for everybody quite well when I said, if we're looking at investing $5 million, don't look to us, don't come to us to double what we already gave you in a grant for operating. And there was no problem with that within the committee structure, just so everybody knew. They were very amenable to that and clearly understood that a grant of up to $5 million over five years was very generous. The only other problem that we've had was coming to a conclusion of a site, and I think that very cooperatively, we came to the conclusion that McLeod Road wasn't going to work, and A.G. Bridges Park, I was thrilled to see it in one of the recommendations of the consultants, was one that would work for them. Kerr Park doesn't. Like, you have your McLeod Road over here, you have Kerr Park over here. They had to find somewhere a happy, a happy middle ground, and that happened to be A.G. Bridges, which is perfect for the Boys and Girls Club, seeing as we're just moving them across the street. So just so that council knows, all those topics were dealt with very cooperatively by staff and the Boys and Girls Club, and I thought this process worked amazingly well, and I was really glad to see us take those steps.
Good, thank you. Yes, Councilor Burt Mays?
I just have a question. What's the timeframe for building this? When do you expect construction to start on this?
I'm going to answer that question, Ms. Morrissey.
Based on the current assessment, we'd be looking at completing it in 2011 and usually a 16-month build time, depending on that. I mean, maybe Mr. Brown can comment more on their feasibility assessment.
Mr. Brown?
About an 18-month construction timeframe, and I think that 2011 is the target.
Are you saying 2011 or?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Todd.
I think that, I think that that is an item that would have to be clarified specifically at the timeframe, but it's in that, in that range is what the, I think that the Boys and Girls Club had anticipated, but, you know, there is a capital funding campaign that needs to take place and so forth.
And Mr. Brown, we're going to ask our CAO, may I comment on that?
Thank you, Your Worship. That was really the point I was going to make that Mr. Brown has just made, that the critical next step is really the fundraising campaign, and I think the city's commitment is contingent upon having matching funds. So I really think it will depend a little bit over the next little while on how successful the fundraising campaign is, and once we know we're solid financially, and then we prepare a bit of a construction project, which then would take probably 18 months. But the fundraising campaign is the critical first step, because without a success with that, you know, we won't be going forward with the city's commitment.
Councilor Mays?
Well, the reason for my question, I'm thinking, down the road when arenas are finished, we're going to have Stamford Arena, and that's pretty much the center of the city. I'm thinking, wouldn't that be a good location at some point? I mean, we're going to have to knock that down, I think, and we own that property. Wouldn't that be a good location?
I'm not sure, Your Worship, if that site was looked at. We're looking at '09 before that becomes vacant. I think while A.G. Bridge has been pointed out as a preferred site, and I think staff like A.G. Bridge as well, the recommendation is a little more broad than that. It sort of references the fact that we can take a look at sites. I mean, we can always look at that. I'm not sure if it was reviewed, but, and I'm not sure that it would really work at all. But A.G. Bridge seems to be suitable, and, you know, I mean, we can look at that site as well, but I'm afraid we're kind of focused right now on the sites that we're on the table.
Thank you, too. It's not a bad idea, Councilor Mays, because I guess we're not there yet, so we should consider it. Councilor Iannoni, again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Councilor Mays for the suggestion, but this is kind of a chicken-or-the-egg kind of thing. You need the commitment from the city, you need to know the site before you go out to your donors. It's been a long process to come up with these three preferred sites, and to come to a conclusion for one, I thought was a huge step forward. We're going to be going out to the community, so anybody watching who is interested in donating to the Boys and Girls Club, they're leaving tonight with a, hopefully, a fund commitment from this council, and they can start their fundraising committee, and they be able to say, this is the building we're building, and this is where we're doing it. And that point's critical, but thank you for your suggestion.
Councilor Thompson and Councilor De Daddy?
Thank you. I'd just like to start off by complimenting the people responsible for this document. Anybody who's been around for a while knows the ups and downs and the problems we had with respect to trying to come to a resolution with respect to what was going to happen with the Boys and Girls Club, and everybody was aware of the need for a new facility. And it's, it's so nice to see that this document that answers all of the questions, protects the municipality, certainly gives a lot of encouragement to the Boys and Girls Club that there is the support here, and that, I just, I would, as I read this on the weekend, I thought, it's a great way to, to deal with a very difficult topic in the past, and I just want to congratulate everybody. I think everything will fall into line as we go through the discussions with the campaign, with the determination of a site. I think that it all has come together very well, and my compliments to everybody involved.
Thank you. Councilor De Daddy?
Thank you, Your Worship. I, too, like to commend the group. I'm glad this is sooner rather than later. I'm glad it's finally coming together. It's been a long process, but it's finally getting there. It's nice to see the light at the end of the tunnel. I do have a couple of questions. First one, this is maybe a silly question, but is it, is it A.G. Bridges, or is it A.G. Bridge? Singular, okay. Because it's, it's, definitely, you've wrote all the reports, and I don't know which is which. I was confused myself, so it is singular. Okay, because our report has plural. It's got the name of Bridges, is that right? Yeah, I think. All right, just want to make sure. Next question, regarding ball diamonds. If we have to quote the staff, I guess, who you, Your Worship, if we have to quote ball diamonds, will this in any way affect us in regards to slow pitch, or any of the Molson slow pitch term is played at A.G. Bridge Park?
Ms. Morrissey?
Uh, three, Your Worship, no. We've had a number of smaller community parks and residential areas that are too small to accommodate that league and that kind of place, so they would not be affected by the parks that we had originally suggested as well.
That's it? Another question? That's it? Okay, thank you. Any other questions, members of council? That's, I have Councilor Carrillo and Councilor Pierre Angelo.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd also like to echo the other aldermen's or councillors' comments on this report. This is a fabulous report. I had a tremendous amount of questions prior to reviewing the report, and I have none now. And I anxious to await the fundraising to begin, and wish you all the best, and I'll be there to help.
Very good, thank you. Councilor Pierre Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship, and I'm sure that they'll be calling Councilor Carrillo as well. Your Worship, I just want to say that in talking to representatives of the club, I think that their biggest concern was whether or not City Hall was going to support them. That's why I believe that the recommendation that's in the report is a good one. The recommendation just simply says that there's still work to be done, but that in the same sense, Your Worship, that the club can now go out to its majority donors, knowing that it has to support a City Hall. I think it's easily supported.
Thank you, council, and I agree that the, this has been a long time coming. A lot of questions have in fact been answered, and I think that we've had the ability of the club, the consultants certainly, and members of council along with staff, they've all worked towards getting a, hopefully, a feasible, a feasibility study that's going to be acceptable to all that will work. And I think that if council approves this matter this evening, it'll give them, the Boys and Girls Club, that is, the ability to go out and start to earn funds or solicit funds in earnest, so we'll see if that brings forward. At this time, members of council, I'm going to ask for the, we have a recommendation before us, and we have a motion, I guess, by Councilor Iannoni. Shall we move?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In my head, I represented you at the Boys and Girls Club AGM meeting this year, and if you remember, at the AGM, I said, you know, I hope this is one of the last few times that the mayor or the representative had to give the opening comments from an alternate location and not in their new club. So I am thrilled, because this is a win-win for everybody in this city to recommend the, recommend staff recommendations before us.
Okay, you've moved the motion then? Correct? Okay, seconded by Councilor Fisher. Any discussion there? Having seen none, shall call the board, all's in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you again. Appreciate it. Good luck on your fundraising, and we'll certainly be behind you, so we wish you the best. Mr. Clark, would you kind of introduce the next item in the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a proposed eight-unit townhouse dwelling in Orchard Road West. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the zoning act on Friday, April 27, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any second process applicable, shall write their name on the signage and touch that to council chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pierre. At this time, going to ask the planning director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darberson?
Thank you, Mr. Darberson. This is a small eight-unit townhouse project being developed part of the Orchard Road West. This is the location of the property to the north and the west of the subdivision, this block, land that has been devoted on holding the townhouse project. The application is requesting a zoning bylaw amendment for a half-inch park of land, this block, and the name of the park, Orchard Road West, actually. And the application is requesting a change of the name of the townhouse on holding to a park of its own, providing for the unit of the townhouse project. This is a site plan. It fronts directly onto KLA Road, and it's a very useful utilization of land in a small block. In terms of physical plan analysis, the property is designated for residential purposes. Medium-density housing is permitted within plans of subdivision where they're compatible with surrounding uses and are located on the higher-level roadways. The proposed development is appropriate development for the land, in that it's The proposed development is appropriate development for the land, in that it is slated as a block of land in the original planned subdivision. It fronts on Kaler Road, which functions as an ingress and egress point for the particular development, does not impact on the residential subdivision per se. The surrounding development is low-density residential, and the traffic generated by this development will be directly on the Kaler Road. And the project is small and scarce and should fit into the surrounding fabric of the neighborhood fairly nicely. In terms of zoning, the property will be re-owned from development holding to R4. Zoning modifications are included in the proposed application because of the configuration of the lot. Some general changes to the front and rear yard setbacks, for example, and attached garages illustrated on the site plan may or may not be included within the development. But our concern would be the allocation of sufficient parking, and that will be provided. In terms of our general conclusions on the substance of the project, we believe it's a good infill project. It meets the official plan criteria for locating medium-density housing in our community. The townhouses will provide a good transition between the single-family developments to the north and west to a tourist commercial block that will be located to the south. And the project will provide additional housing choices for residents who wish to live in this area. It's our recommendation that council support this particular development as outlined in this report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darberson. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone at this time who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment, other than the applicant. Anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposal? Okay, having seen none, at this time, the council will hear from the applicant or his representative. Mr. Brady, welcome.
Welcome, councillors and mayor. I'll be very brief this evening, as there's not much controversy associated with it. This is a small, smart growth type of development. It is a part of the overall plan that was put in for to go west. The block was identified as a part of that. So as the area has grown, the block was set up in the sway for townhousing. And as Mr. Darberson pointed out, the townhousing will, all the vehicles will come straight out onto Kaler, so it's an arterial road, and there should be no impacts in terms of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Brady with respect to the proposal? Having seen none, and the public meeting with respect to the zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Councilor Thompson?
Yes, there was one letter of objection which indicated concern about drainage. All of that is left after in the site plan. This is an appropriate development for the area and for that site, and is included in the original plan, and I would make the motion for approval.
That's correct. Councilor Iononi? Okay, seconded by Councilor Iononi. Any discussion on the matter? Having seen none, all's in favor? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Brady. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next item in the agenda, please?
A public meeting is being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to extend tourist commercial zoning with site-specific provisions over Union Avenue. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, April 27, 2007. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment shall write their name on the signage and outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. Once again, I'm going to call on the planning director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darberson?
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. This is a property that was sold by council for a seven-story hotel. In that discussion, there was concern about company's parking provisions for an adjacent church. And as a result of the decision on the zoning, council directed us to proceed to investigate a land exchange. Therefore, this application this evening actually is a city-initiated zoning bylaw amendment. I'll explain further in a moment. This is the subject property. The attached is the lands of the Suites Hotel, and it involves the Union Avenue road allowance and a land exchange between this particular developer and the city with respect to areas for parking. On April 3, 2006, council authorized that to work with the Country Inn and Suites Hotel project and the adjacent Lutheran Church in order to facilitate the preservation of parking spaces at the hotel site for the church's use. On March 25, 2007, council gave approval and principle to approve land exchange between the city and the hotel developers. The land exchange is conditional upon the rezoning of the Union Avenue road allowance permitted use as a parking lot in conjunction with the hotel. The amendment will allow the parking lot for the Country Inn and Suites Hotel to be extended onto Union Avenue and provide additional parking for the hotel. The land conveyed to the city would be used as a municipal parking lot except for Sunday mornings, when the parking lot would be used for the congregation at St. Paul's Church. And this slide shows the land exchange. The elongated parcel to the left-hand side is Union Avenue road allowance. That land would be provided to the developer. In exchange, the city would receive the parcel adjacent to the church. And as I explained, that land would become a municipal parking lot and used as well as the church's parking facility on Sundays. The subject lands are designated for tourist commercial purposes. The official plan and purge is all permitted use to provide adequate on-site parking. By including the Union Avenue road allowance in the hotel site, the existing parking lot can be expanded to provide additional on-site parking for the hotel. The closure of Union Avenue should not have any adverse impact on surrounding properties as no proper uses front on Union Avenue for access purposes. The Union Avenue road allowance has been declared surplus by the city. In terms of zoning, the Country Inn and Suites property is zoned tourist commercial with special provisions permitting a seven-story hotel. The Union Avenue road allowance is zoned tourist commercial. The requested amendment will extend the site-specific TC zoning over the Union Avenue road allowance, and the Union Avenue road allowance will merge with the hotel site and will be used by retired parking for the hotel. In turn, the land transferred to the city will be zoned tourist commercial, which permits the parking lot. And this particular parking lot, as an indicator, will be used Sunday mornings for the hotel congregation for their specific parking use at that time. The zoning bylaw amendment can be supported for the following reasons. The Union Avenue road allowance has been declared surplus. The closure of the Union Avenue road allowance should not have any adverse impact on surrounding properties. The official plan and purge is all permitted use to provide adequate on-site parking. The proposed land exchange and the zoning bylaw amendment will benefit the hotel by enabling additional parking to be provided. The Lutheran Church will benefit by having access to the land and additional parking spaces for their activities. The land conveyed to the city will operate as a municipal parking lot and thereby enable the city to generate income. As our recommendation this evening, therefore, that this rezoning amendment, that it is a city-initiated zoning amendment, take place to provide for the proper zoning of the future of the churches. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Darberson. Once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant here who wishes to speak to this this evening? Please come forward. Would you be kind of introduce yourself, please? Yes, you name an address, please?
My name is Chu Te Kim.
Thank you.
Niagara Korean Presbyterian Church.
Thank you.
10th Street. Some council didn't get our recommendation, so I wrote the first copies. Please divide to make somebody a little help.
Yes, Mr. Kim, we have your letter. Is that the same thing you're having, you're speculating? We have, yes, is there additional information?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kim, you're an elder of the Korean Church, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
We, the member of Niagara Korean Presbyterian Church, send out our sincere thanks for your service for the city of Niagara Falls. We, member of the Niagara Falls Korean Presbyterian Church, draw the attention of the members of the council. First wrong procedures, just doing backward. Council gave approvals in principle on March 25, 2007. They considered the St. Paul's Street church during the process passed. The developers already finished making parking lots closing Union Avenue before having public hearings. The council of the developer team has noticed in our existence, even though we are adjacent to the Union Avenue, where there are posts using Union Avenue mostly the closure of the Union Avenue brings too much adverse impact on our thoughts and congregation. How can it happen this way? Are we not citizens of Niagara Falls or Trinidad? Are there hostages in the city of falls? So we have some recommendations due to the closure of the Union Avenue, some recommendations this member will explain to council.
Welcome, sir. Would you be kind enough for the record just to give us your name and address?
Yes, my name is Song Yul Chang.
Mr. Chang?
I'm from Niagara Falls Korean Presbyterian Church.
Thank you.
The recommendations are that the importance of Union Avenue is that it cuts off the natural traffic flow of the street, and it causes heavy traffic, and it does not ensure the protection of the public. And Union Avenue cannot be declared as surplus. We're requesting, asking, requesting...
Mr. Chang, could I interrupt you? Could you speak in a louder place so we can all hear you? Thank you.
We're asking, requesting compensation in order to make the traffic easy, allow us to park at the public parking lot or at the hotel parking lot of the Union Avenue side.
So you're asking for the council to give consideration in this rezoning to allow your church to park either in the parking lot, the public parking on Kitchener Street, is that correct? Or in the newly created parking lot?
Yes, newly created parking lot, under Union Avenue.
Okay. Mr. Darberson, could you address that matter?
That's a fair question to the council.
The impact, is it...
Certainly. ...on their ground.
With regard to the impact in the church, are they losing, I guess, they're saying they're losing some funding on Union Street where they park?
We understand that their congregation has utilized Union Avenue before for their parking in El Paso and the neighborhood. And obviously, the concern is that they're likely losing that parking and looking for other considerations.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, and I understand the CIO is directing me to the Director of Public Works. Mr. Darberson, can you address the issue as well, please? Just be a little clear.
Mr. Darberson, with respect to the loss of parking, in the past, I mean, we've had with St. Paul's Church, kind of agreeing with them to use the Kitchener Street lot on Sunday mornings for religious services. We've done that for a number of churches throughout the city, be it on-street or in where there was paid parking to allow that. We could, staff would be willing to meet with the Korean Church to talk about their needs and providing them some additional spaces for Sunday mornings during their religious services.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chang or Mr. Kim, would you like to come forward with that? Suffice? Would you like to come forward, please? This is somebody else. And your name, please, just for the benefit?
I'm in South County.
Mr. Kim again?
Yes. Korean Presbyterian Church.
Yes.
4890 Kitchener Street.
Right.
I'm here to advise that the church has been there for a hundred years, and we've been there about twenty years. And the closing of Union has a negative impact on the church. Basically, we've been trying to sell the church, and the property has gone down, has decreased because of the closing of Union Avenue. We're asking is the, again, access to the parking lot, to the parking lot for church visitors, as well as the, allow us to change it to a commercial zone, we're trying to sell the property. Right now, it's, the property's decreased, so we're trying to, you know...
Yes, we understand. But at the same time, we're just saying staff is glad to work with you to try to accommodate your parking for services on Sundays?
Okay. Would you allow us to change it to a commercial zone?
Well, that's a matter of another application, so you'd have to sit with staff to go from there.
Okay, we'll do that. Appreciate it.
Yes, Councilor Mays?
I'm just wondering, how many parking spots are in that spot that's going to be replacing it? How many spots?
Mr. Gray, can you answer that question at all? So, Your Worship, I'm just trying to understand your question. Is it the land?
I just want to know, how big is the parking lot? It's going to accommodate, well, I guess my second question, are your church services at the same time as the St. Paul's Church around the corner? Do services at the same time on Sunday mornings?
Well, we have Sundays, we also have like Saturday prayer meetings at all, and Wednesdays.
So, Your Worship, I take it by your question, you're talking about the lands that will be conveyed to the city?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's, there's only about fifteen spots there. It's not a very large parking lot. So what we would look at, you know, we would look at, let's say, negotiating with the Korean Church is how many spots they had on Union Avenue and offering that potentially on the Kitchener Street lot for those services. So that's what we would look at. Again, there's not a lot of lands to, the lands that we are getting, as I said, about fifteen spots. I don't know how many spots right now are available on Union Avenue. You know, staff would have to look at that in detail.
My concern is that you have the two churches meeting at the same time, and the next thing you've got a problem with parking hardware, and then you've got...
But there's the small lot, but there is the larger lot in Kitchener Street that's quite a bit larger than that.
Right across from the church, Councilor Mays.
Just north of Union Avenue, if you look at the map up there on Kitchener Street. Enough of that, there's a very large parking lot there.
Direct you to the screen here that the clerk attempted to approach you.
There's a large lot. Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Kim, from that perspective, you could be made whole in respect to the parking. If you wish to apply for rezoning of the church's use, that would be another application you'd have to make. But staff would be glad to sit with you? Okay, is that your only concern then?
Yes.
Okay, and as I said, staff are prepared to sit with you at the direction of council, and we can discuss that as well. Remember, the council, at this point, we'll hear from the applicant or his listener. Mr. Bacca, welcome.
Evening, Your Worship. The city's technically the applicant, but I'd like to say a few words on any of them. First of all, we wholly endorse, if the city can provide some parking spaces to the church on Municipal Parking Lot in Kitchener. We cannot allow them to use our parking lot just the way it's going to be positioned. There are going to be gates. The difficulty we have is Saturday night is the hotel's busiest night. There just isn't any parking spaces on Sunday mornings. So that's the problem we have with St. Paul Church, and everyone followed the box, and this land exchange was a super idea to appease that church. And I think you have another option to appease the Korean Church. So I hope you avail yourself of that opportunity.
You're correct, we are the applicant, so you're speaking on behalf of the owner adjacent, which is fine. Mr. Darberson, do you wish to speak on behalf of the council for any matters with respect to the questions that we raised?
Only insofar as we have implemented council's direction with respect to this matter, that now this new matter has surfaced, we will follow the same type of procedures as we did last time to try to provide some accommodation.
Thank you. Members of council, are there any questions? Okay, we do have before us a recommendation, and at this point, I'm going to conclude the public meeting with regard to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, and take a request from council. Does Councilor Counselor?
Yes, I know that this has been going on for quite some time, and this was an arrangement that I thought was all finalized, and everybody was happy with it. I'm rather surprised to see the delegation and the opposition that came at the last minute, but I think there is a solution to that. And I would like to make the motion to approve the recommendation as outlined in the report, along with the added... to approve the recommendation as outlined in the report along with the added comment that they worked with the Korean church congregation to resolve their parking issues similar as they've done with the Lutheran church.
Thank you, council. Seconded by Counselor Di Addati. Any discussion to that motion? Having seen none, I'll call the vote, all of whom favor. Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you again, members of the congregation, also Mr. Batalino as well. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Members of council, we don't have a, anything in writing at this point from the representation. We have present members of the BIA and I'd like to ask your indulgence, there's a request, they were not included in the agenda, there was a request, they made more recently a verbal request, but they would come to council as to whether or not they should be allowed to make a presentation this evening. So at the pleasure of council, we have a request and delegation from the BIA downtown to make a comment or read a letter. Counselor Di Addati?
I would make a motion to allow them to speak.
Is there a second to the motion?
No.
Counselor Carryo? Okay, the second. Any discussion to that? Having seen none, I'll call the vote, all of whom favor. Motion's carried, thank you. Making the presentation tonight is Mrs. Ulrich Gross, is it correct?
That's correct.
And the council has not had the benefit of seeing the letter yet, so you have some correspondence that you're going to share with us, I believe?
I do.
Okay.
Paris Alcibiades, members of council, thanks for giving me a few minutes of your time. I am going to read a letter from the downtown board of management and it is dated May twenty-fourth. Dear members, the downtown Niagara Falls Board of Management currently represents fifty-eight property owners and one hundred and six businesses, all whom have a strong interest in moving forward the revitalization of downtown Niagara Falls. Aside from the fact that it is critical to our members' businesses and investments, we believe it is of vital importance to the health of the city as a whole and that it will provide the residents of Niagara Falls with a place to live, work, meet, shop, and play. It will restore the heart of the city for the residents and show the visitors we take pride in our city. The Board of Management has offered its resources too and is working closely with staff at City Hall through our consultants PKA in preparing a comprehensive report and presentation for council. We believe you will find our story compelling. It is with disappointment that we heard about council's recent vote to remove twelve million dollars for the revitalization of downtown Niagara Falls from the city's capital budget. We would prefer that such a decision be deferred until studies that are currently underway can be presented to council. However, we are confident that the presentation will show not only the ability to accomplish this project, but also the need. We wish to take this opportunity to reach out to council. As such, we invite you to call us with questions, concerns, suggestions, or to attend one of our meetings in person. We will support you and help you in any way we can to give you confidence that voting in favor of revitalizing the downtown is the right thing to do. Our secretary Dorothy Duncan is available to answer questions or to discuss your suggestions Tuesdays through Thursdays at our office located at forty-four hundred Point Street. Through her, you'll also be able to contact any board member or members of BIA. And we look forward to meeting with you in the coming months as we work together to find the right path to the revitalization of downtown Niagara Falls. And that is Don Edgiers very truly, the downtown board Niagara Falls Board of Management. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll take that into consideration and I will have a letter to circulate to members of council that I believe has been forthcoming from the BIA. Any comments from members of council? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Moving on to the next report, if I may. I have some comments with respect to the passing of some individuals. I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Mr. Emmanuel Jankola, father of Anita and father-in-law Victor Peter Angelo. Also, the recent passing of Mrs. Doris Hunter, mother of Barb McDonald, a former city employee. And also Mr. Antonio Varrassi, father of Mr. Jeff Varrassi, who we all know who does significant work in the, in our community through Project Share. The heartfelt thoughts of members of council are with the families and we mourn your loss of your loved ones as well. Moving on to other city business members of council, as you're aware, Niagara Falls is doing very well in the, in CDC Seven Wonders competition. However, at last check, the CDC voting website was still down. We have been encouraging folks to continue to vote when, when the site is back up and running. I'm sure that you've been following, but Niagara Falls has been fighting for top spot in the voting contest and we are certainly, we can certainly use the support of the entire city of Niagara Falls as well as those of our visitors. We've contacted a number of different groups, the Niagara Falls Newark Council, the Niagara Falls Newark Gazette, the mayor of Niagara Falls Newark have also been discussing this and whenever we go somewhere, we do talk about the benefit. We've had our radio stations promoting it and I send special thanks to Counselor Di Addati on initiating the city's get out the vote process. He and staff member Dale Morton have been busy preparing banners, looking at ads to remind people to vote and contacting schools to get their word out. Also, I've been in touch on a regular basis with the local media, encouraging residents to vote and have had the opportunity to speak with many of you who have contacted my office or whom I've, who I've seen in the community. I've had discussions directly with the OSB News and Niagara Falls Review and we hope to have banners erected as well. We do have an extension of time, as you know, till next week, till the end of the month, I believe. So thank you for your support so far. Keep spreading the word. We can all use your support to keep Niagara in the top spot. Over the past several weeks, there have been some significant events in our city and most recently, Rick Rose School of Music had their year-end concert on May twenty-fifth. It was wonderful to see so many families and music students in attendance perform at their year-end music concert at Kingston College. The students showed off wonderful performances on Friday evening and this concert was a musical highlight this year in our community. We also had the fortunate distinction of designating Covington Square on May twenty-sixth, after much work to make this happen, community partners that were able to come together to make this designation a reality are to be commended, the Niagara Falls Municipal Heritage Committee, the Village of Chippewa Citizens Committee, and the Royal Canadian Legion branch in three ninety-six in Chippewa. On Sunday, Culture Fest was hosted by the mayor's youth advisory committee. I'd like to congratulate the students on the mayor's youth advisory committee who organized and hosted this fabulous event this Sunday at the McVain Center that brought together various culture groups in the city and I certainly enjoyed viewing the cultural displays and seeing the lively entertainment. An upcoming event, I'd like to bring to attention to the members of the community, the Chippewa Lions Club Public Meeting Regarding Problems at the Park. On May thirty-first, there will be a special meeting and I was contacted this afternoon regarding a public meeting to be held on Thursday, May thirty-first at seven PM at the Chippewa Lions Club. They have invited Niagara region police along with neighbors and have asked that I extend an invitation to members of council to attend the meeting to discuss recent problems at the park. Issues they were discussing stem from reports of drug and alcohol abuse as well and there's a very important meeting to attend. I hope that you'd make every effort to do so. Also, Ontario March of Dimes National Access Awareness Week, May thirty-first. On May thirty-first at Lakeside Park in St. Catherine's, local representatives will be paying tribute to businesses and organizations that help remove barriers in the community for people with disabilities. The eighty-fifth anniversary of the Niagara Falls Lions Club will take place on June first at the Thursday evening at the Niagara Falls Lions Club. They're celebrating the eighty-fifth anniversary. The Niagara Falls Lions are the third oldest club in Ontario and that celebration will be held at the Delphi Hall to recognize Lions Club dedication to our city. There'll also be taking place the twentieth anniversary of Cavendish Manor on June second. Saturday, Cavendish Manor will celebrate their twentieth anniversary. The public is welcome to attend between twelve-thirty and four PM. I'd like to wish Cavendish Manor congratulations on this milestone. Look forward to visiting residents and staff during their celebration on Saturday. Also, once again this year, we'll be hosting the Rural Medicine Week on June fourth. During Rural Medicine Week, we will have the opportunity to welcome medical students to Niagara Falls and to ask these young people to consider our city as a place to set up their practice in the future. And I'd like to call on Mr. John Bean, who has a special announcement, I understand. So I'll invite him to the podium. Mr. Bean, if you don't mind, our council's going to take one quick minute. He has something unique to share as a fundraising effort. Mr. Bean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. On Thursday, June fourteenth, Niagara Falls Rotary Club will be having annual golf tournament and one of the major prizes is a buccalure, thirty-five thousand dollar value. The next one is a prepaid twenty-five thousand dollar, all expenses paid funeral. So you get a home loan, you get a twenty-five thousand dollar certificate for a funeral. The bonus part of this one is, is that every player that gets a home loan gets twenty-five thousand, so there's up to three point six million dollars in prizes available. So I just thought, and there's also airfare anywhere in the continental USA, a four-day cruise on Royal Caribbean and choice of some video equipment, your home loan. And thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. I'm sure that most people avoid that home loan. Thank you. The next order of business, members of council, communications and comments of the city clerk. We have a number of items on the agenda. How do you wish to deal with them? Yes, Counselor Wayne?
Receiving file the first one, approve the other four.
I'm sorry, receiving file the first?
And approve the other four.
Okay, the motion by Counselor Wayne, receiving file the first. Any, is there a second to that? Harton Agar requests to support the resolution for the Reality PE sixty-minute edge campaign making a second physical education credit mandatory for secondary school students. Counselor Wayne, do you wish to speak?
I'll speak to it. You know, there's nothing as it worse than nanny state mentality. This isn't the way to accomplish the end you want to accomplish. It's upon the, you know, it depends upon the parents to feed their kids, nurture their feelings, to get them to realize the value of nutrition, to get them out and active. It's like, you know, it's coming upon us too, to give them the opportunities they want. Like we're going to invest in the Boys and Girls Club, we've invested in the McVain Center, we built the skateboard park. They will do what is cruel to do. Trying, forcing them into gym classes is not going to accomplish it. In fact, it works the other way. Now, they say in their literature that in the past twenty-five years, obesity rates have more than tripled for kids between the ages of twelve and seventeen. Well, it was about twenty-five years ago, they made one phys ed credit mandatory in high school. Northern high school, you didn't have to take it. That was the first, one of the first things I dropped. It was always one of my lowest subjects and, you know, my daughter is in great shape, size one jeans. She was forced to take phys ed. It pulled down her average. You know, this isn't the way to do it. There's other ways, better ways to accomplish this. You're going to have a detrimental impact on the marks of smart kids who are working really hard to get into the university programs that they want. It'll pull down my daughter's average, it'll pull down other kids' average. They don't, you know, the way these programs are structured, they do a little basketball, they do a little volleyball, they do a little soccer. You know, it's, it's, they're forced into team sports and a lot of them really aren't interested. And if you want to get kids active, there's lots of other ways. Someone likes baseball, riding, someone likes walking, someone likes skateboarding. Encourage them to do something that they enjoy doing and hopefully be able to continue that for the rest of their life. This just wastes everybody's time and my own daughter, who struggles with math, says, you know, if you're going to make something compulsory in high school, add something else's compulsory, make it another math. This is the twenty-first century. We've got to prepare our kids for the future and phys ed is not the way to do it.
Well, we don't have a second to the motion yet. Is there a second to the motion? No, there isn't at this point, so we, let's deal with these individual members of council. So we have a request to support the resolution for the Reality PE sixty-minute edge campaign from Harton Agar making a second physical education credit mandatory for secondary school students. Prefer to council. Moved by Counselor, I know, seconded by Counselor Di Addati. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all of whom favor. One, two, three. Opposed. One, two. Well, we're going to extend, sir. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I, I listened with intent to the council's comments and I thought it was automatic, we just move ahead and if anybody was interested in physical activity and exercise, it's me. And I always believed in her. I found a little bit of advertising and promotion about this periodic rate without forcing people to do, I don't have any problem with. But listening to her comments, I'd like to just defer this for next meeting and, and give me the opportunity to look into it a little further. I'm not going to.
The motion defers, non-debatable. Okay, we'll call the vote, all of whom favor. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It's unanimous, thank you. Motion's deferred. Thank you. The next item is the Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Toronto Residents in Partnership, a nonprofit organization requests the month of June proclaimed as Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Mays. Any discussion to that motion? Having seen none?
Month, they don't have to do sixty minutes, they're pregnant.
Okay, we'll call the vote. All of whom favor. Motion's carried, thank you very much. Next item is the National Access Awareness Week. The city's Disability Advisory Committee has requested the week of May twenty-seventh to June second be declared as National Access Awareness Week. To move by Counselor, okay, Angela, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any discussion? Having seen none, all of whom favor. Motion's carried, thank you. The third, fourth item is the Clifton Hill BIA requests for approval of the two thousand and seven budget. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any discussion? Having seen none, all of whom favor. Motion's carried, thank you. The fifth item is the Niagara Falls Lions Club requests the week of May twenty-seventh to June second, two thousand and seven be proclaimed as Niagara Falls Lions Club Week in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Mays. Any discussion? Having seen none, all of whom favor. Motion's carried, thank you. Mr. Pratt, any additional answer to council's consideration?
Yes, your worship, a few things. First, just in relation to National Access Awareness Week, I'd be remiss if I didn't comment on behalf of the Disability Advisory Committee. Usually they just come for this meeting, but we will have them come at a later date. They just wanted to mention the Breaking the Barriers session that the mayor referred to at Port De Loozy on Thursday at eleven-thirty AM. Annually, the committee does a barbecue here at City Hall and we'll be doing that on June eighth. So June eighth, over the lunch hour, mark that in your calendars. And we will come back at some point in the near future to talk about a ceiling track that we've been involved with that for wheelchair lifts at the Y. I know Counselor Peter Angelo was also involved with that, so we'll come in on that in the future.
Okay.
Couple of additional items, if you look at your additions to council handouts this evening. Two report, a report related to the Greater Niagara Transit Commission and that's also related to a bylaw that we've had added to the agenda and the gist of this is, as the bylaw indicates, it's to approve the dissolution of the Greater Niagara Transit Commission and to continue the operations of that commission as a division of the corporation of the city of Niagara Falls. And that's in keeping with the, the report that has been done and brought forward to council previously, so.
We'll do that, I understand. Okay. Counselor Mays, are you making a recommendation?
Yes, I'd like to make a recommendation too and I'd like to also, since we're dissolving the Transit Commission, I was on there for sixteen years. Counselor Thompson was on for many years. Jim Di Addati was on and you've been on and I just want to say to past commissioners and me also, a great thank you. It's been a great commission, it's run for, since nineteen sixty and, and for the most part, I'm kind of sorry to see it dissolve, but I guess this is the way of councils these days and, but anyway, just want to congratulate and thank all past commissioners.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mays. Counselor Mays moving the recommendation, seconded. Counselor Di Addati, any further discussion? Having seen none, all of whom favor. Any opposed? Motion's carried. Sorry, was that opposed, Counselor Thompson? One opposed? Thank you.
Further, there's a communication from Mr. Hopkins at Bradrick and Partners and this is related to the Hydro Mergenture, which we passed a resolution last meeting and this is a resolution giving you the authority to basically sign the shareholders agreement and it's included at the back of the communication, so we're looking for council's approval of that.
Okay, you have it in your package, councilors, to move the recommendation. Okay, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Di Addati. Any discussion with respect to the motion? Having seen none, all of whom favor. The motion's carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Pratt. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Members of council, we have the matters of the consent agenda before us. I'm sorry, corporate services, ratification of corporate services, we call on Counselor Peter Angelo to chair.
Sorry, thanks, your worship. You're welcome. I actually have minutes from two meetings, minutes from the May sixteenth meeting as well, so minutes from the May sixteenth meeting are as follows, that the two thousand and seven general purposes by DUP approved is presented with an amendment to include a grant in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for the Child Advocacy, Child Advocacy Center. Second item, to take any money passed two thousand and seven not previously approved and identified for the downtown SIP out of the two thousand and seven to two thousand and eleven capital projects budget. And the last item, your worship, that the two thousand and seven to two thousand and eleven capital budget be approved with the amendment to the downtown SIP as noted previously. Those are minutes from May sixteen, minutes from tonight, your worship. First, that the minutes of the May sixteenth meeting be approved as recorded. Second, that the revised municipal bingo policy and the lottery licensing fee bylaw be approved as amended. Thirdly, that the two thousand and seven financing lease report be received for information. Fourth item, that June twenty-ninth and September twenty-eighth be approved as the two thousand and seven final due dates for the residential pipeline farm land and managed forest assessment classes. Fifth item, that the two thousand and seven property tax rates be approved. classes, fifth item, that the 2007 property tax rates be approved, sixth item, that the report on possible long-term changes to the licensing bylaw to permit seasonal vendors be deferred to the June 11th meeting, seventh item, the staff report back on possible safety issues with the Crown Plaza property on Dunn Street and Stanley Avenue, eighth item, the copy be provided with a copy of the draft market feasible of the study that was sent back to the consultant, and the last item, Your Worship, be it resolved that the committee go into a closed meeting to consider the proposed accounting acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality, and I would so move the minutes.
Moved by Council Peter Angelo, seconded by Council Diodati. Any discussion to those that matter? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Ratification and camera actions.
Mr. Worship, the recommendation in camera is that Park 2 on reference Plan 59R-13284 be declared surplus and offered for sale by way of direct sale to the abutting property owners listed as 1448190Ontario Limited and 258796Investments Limited for the appraised price of $4,200, and further that the abutting owners pay for all costs associated with the sale.
Thank you. Moved by Council Peter Angelo, seconded by Council Aiononi. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda, members of council, it's your pleasure. Move the entire agenda, Council Peter Angelo, seconded by Council Aiononi. Yes, Council Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to remove the revisions to supply and services report and talk to that.
Okay, move that.
I'll refer you to Mr. McDonald, maybe you can convince me, and the last thing I'm interested in is, first of all, cleaning up my desk, but the second thing is, the last thing I'm interested in is trying to micromanage the municipality, and I understand what contempt is, and I see all of the information with respect to what other municipalities have established as far as their spending limits, but I'm here because I want to make sure that the spending is controlled and the council is aware of all the activities with respect to that, and your natural response would be, well, you know, that's going to happen. You know, I, when I was not here, I intently watched what was going on and read periodically in the paper about some of the approvals, and, you know, in 1997, we went through and completely redid this council chamber, and at a substantial cost, along with the mayor's office, along with the C.A.O.'s office, and the reception in that particular area. And I was amazed to think, because we went from 12 people, we certainly could have got 12 people around here without, without the configuration that's existing today and the spending of $50,000. And I know that this was a report to council, and it was approved by council to make this happen, just after we had done it a few years before. But what really amazed me, and what was not debated at council, was the fact that the mayor's office was redone over, the C.A.O.'s office, and all through that particular area, which never came to council, was never debated. I remember when we had the discussion about the changes at the council member, at the council chamber, one of the council members refused to take a chair because it was going to cost $8, $900 to the taxpayer. So anyway, items like that, where you have items spent without the council being aware of it, and I, I read the article with, with great interest because just after I had been attacked in the office, and the entire carpet and everything was replaced in 1999, brand-new carpet, and all of a sudden, everything is pulled up and thrown away. There was all new furniture in there. What happened to the furniture that was there before? I remember the one comment, a green chair, a leather chair I had in there, it was referred to, well, we don't need a throne. Very upsetting to me at the time when I looked at that, it was a green chair. Maybe the, the comment should have been, maybe it's too small. Maybe that should have been the response. But anyway, this is, this is something that I have real concern with, giving people $50,000 decision-making, $100,000 decision-making, even if it's in the budget, I have a problem with that because there are things like that that happen on a regular basis that I think the council should know about, and I think the council should have control of that. And whether anybody else supports, we are not on this, I have a problem with it, and I think we should be involved in the spending, we should be involved in every aspect of it, and when I see things that our decisions are made, maybe through you, you can tell me, where's the question? Through, through, through Mr. McDonald.
I think, if I could, I'd have to break this down a little bit, there's really two questions. I think the intent of the report and the point that the change in terms of science, I just want to clarify that, that this report does not change in any way at all the role of council in approving expenditures, none whatsoever. Because as you know, I'm sure the policy currently is that anything over $100,000 would come to council for approval, anything below $100,000, the C.A.O. has authority to authorize that, assuming it's in the budget and an item. So the fact is now, you wouldn't see an item unless it hits $100,000, assuming it's in the budget. This is, is really an internal recommendation to reflect the organizational change that's recently taken place. But what will happen is typically internally, an item up to $20,000 would be signed by the directors, and in recognizing the two executive directors' positions now, instead of everything over 20 going to the C.A.O., those items between 20 and 50 would go to the two executive directors. But as I said, it's really an internal change, it has absolutely nothing to do with the role of council, because the current policy does not require these items to come to council, so there's no change with council's role. So that's really the intent of this report. And the other item, in reference to, not going back five years ago, but the, any painting and so on changes in the mayor's, C.A.O.'s office, my recollection is that, you know, that was about $10,000, which included, you know, renovating a washroom that was, you know, 30 years old. The furniture actually was reallocated from the mayor's office. The desk actually is still being used, of course, in the city by another director, so I mean, you're talking basically painting and carpet. So those items are typically in the budget, we're talking $10,000 to do those kinds of work. We've recently done a little bit of painting, probably cost a couple thousand dollars. It's ongoing maintenance we do all the time. But this policy really has absolutely nothing to do with that, and this policy is an internal to reflect the organizational changes.
I'm glad you explained that, because that's exactly why I'm standing up and making the comments I am. I think the council should be aware of items that you're referring to, and it was, it was more than $10,000. My comment is, it's a replacement of things that didn't have to be replaced, and I would suggest to you, maybe you should find out where the furniture went, maybe you'd be surprised.
Your Worship, I'd like to just clarify, just as an example, the desk that was in that office, just on that point, we were required to order a new desk actually for Director of Parks and Recreation at the time. The desk that was in the mayor's office went to the Director of Parks and Recreation, and a new desk was ordered, which would have been ordered anyway, but instead of going to the Director of Parks and Rec, went to the mayor's office. So that's exactly what happened to that.
How about the carpeting? What's your answer? Carrying perfectly good carpeting.
I, I have no answer for that. I could talk to a building person on it, I don't know how old that carpeting is, but...
I appreciate your comments, but, and I suggest you look and see where the furniture ended up. I'm not going to make an issue of that right now, but I'm not going to support this. I think, I think we have to be informed, we have to be aware, and I appreciate your comments, but it's not as simple as that in my mind.
Council Fisher?
I did not know what the mayor, previous mayor was going to speak about, but I too had concerns with this report, and I too will not support this.
Okay, members of council, yes, Councilwoman?
I haven't thought about it earlier before, but I'm with them. You know, one of the things I've always done here is try to keep a tighter control over our spending. I know Alderman Orr, I always wanted to get tighter control over it, and this is something that she would have voted against as well. She used to get upset when she'd go into some director's office and they'd have a whole new set of furniture. You know, we have a consent agenda for this purpose. If it's minor stuff that really just needs a rubber stamp, then put it on the consent agenda and we'll rubber stamp it, or maybe there is some reason not to rubber stamp something, in which case, if we're aware of it, it gives us a chance to pull it, discuss it, and perhaps turn it down. So I think, just in terms of being responsible with the taxpayers' money, this is something I won't support either.
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. Just one more point of clarification. As I mentioned, the items that we're talking about are items that are included in the budget. Anything that's over $100,000 comes to council now, this is an internal change. But also, keep in mind that we come to council with the full listing of all of the checks that are issued through the finance department, and council has an opportunity to identify any one of those checks if there's a question and needing clarification. So, you know, you approve the budget, you deal with the finance bylaw, where you get to see every check that's issued, and then, of course, anything that requires a tender, you deal with that, and anything over $100,000, you get to look at it again. So, as I said, this is an internal change through lack of the organizational structure with executive directors, it doesn't change in any way your current involvement or authority relative to spending.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, I think by the time we get around to issuing a check, it's a little too late, we've already received the goods and are using them, or we've already received the service, and it's a little too late to try and refund that, so checks, just don't tell it for me.
Okay, Council Aiononi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I voted against the increase for the C.A.O.'s spending to $100,000, so I'm going to be consistent, try to be consistent on that. Mr. McDonald talks about it's a housekeeping, and you know, I sat through the senior staff meeting, and I listened, and I understand those points of view, but I will say, I forever complained in this council chamber about the accounts that we get. They're very vague, under administrative, that covers a dozen different things. They're not clear to me what the money's being spent for. This isn't a new complaint, to put it for the years that we've been using this new printout, and I find it very confusing. So to me, to be able to say, read accounts, and it should be cut and dry, it isn't really cut and dry.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Council Diodati?
I just had a question in regard to the current policy. What for desired bidders? That was a question, Mr. McDonald. It says here, you are to prepare specifications, other requirements, including those for desired bidders. Do we pick ahead of time who we want to bid on these types of things, or what does that, maybe somebody can clarify what that means for me. Through Your Worship.
Mr. McDonald?
We have people register for our supply and services to ensure that they're included in the process. We also do public advertising and tender, so that's, also, when we deal with consulting projects, we realize we have a separate policy on approving the reference to consulting, particularly through public works. We come to council with an attitude, we have a list of pre-approved consulting groups that we deal with, so it's just directions, and it's very common with corporations that have these lists, and, but it doesn't mean we are exclusive to them, we also have a very public process in addition to that, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment? Yes, finish first.
Yeah, just to reiterate with that, I mean, that's for when staff is going out to get quotes on things, that we make sure that they're using the list of people that are interested in supplying the city, so that they're not excluding anybody, so this is actually a control mechanism to make sure that everybody's engaged and that everybody's aware.
So my maintenance, it's not limited to, okay, okay, great.
Council carry on.
Thank you, Your Worship. My understanding of Mr. McDonald's answer to Councilor Thompson's question is that this already exists, we already have, the staff already has $100,000 authority to spend, so voting against this doesn't change that, so if you would request that, you have to...
Counselor, the recommendation is that the, that the signing authorities for two cities, the city's two executive director positions be increased to 50 from 20,000. And, you know, clearly, the C.A.O. has the ability to approve.
So all we're doing then is saying that Mr. McDonald will have to sign for anything up to $100,000, and we'd be denying the other directors from being able to sign, so really, what does it accomplish? My other, my other comment would be if, if any of the other counselors want more information, I've never been denied any information that I've ever asked for, and if any of the other counselors want more of an explanation on, on accounts or on spending, I'd be glad to support them in any changes that they would like to make to bring more accounting to us, and I'm sure the staff would accommodate us.
Yeah, and that's available at any meeting, any time. Okay. Pleasure of council, then, with respect to the motion, is there, Councilwoman? You made that motion?
There's no motion.
There's no motion yet, sorry. Pleasure of council? Council Thompson?
And I'd move we defer the CD 2007 revisions to supply and services and move the balance.
Motion deferred, seconded by Council, just defer to when?
For what?
And for what, that's right, for what?
Never, never land.
No, it's, yeah. It doesn't make sense to defer then to another term. Pleasure of council? You're supposing it right now, but we're dealing with CD 2007-12. We're mostly for it.
Move the recommendation.
Move the recommendation with Council Maves, seconded by Council Diodati. Okay, any other discussion? No, no, just that one. Okay, we've heard the vote, we've heard the comments, and we'll call the vote, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, opposed. One, two, and I vote in favor, so the motion is carried. Moved by balance by Council Peers, seconded by Council Diodati. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Okay, Mr. Clark, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to be considered?
Through the chair, as I already mentioned, there is the additional bylaw regarding the dissolution of the Greater Niagara Transit Commission, so that'll be bylaw 2013, and the confirmatory bylaw will be bylaw 2114.
Okay. Motion to introduce the bylaws, and bylaws to give a first reading by Council Peers, seconded by Council Diodati. You've heard the motion. Any comments, questions? Council Fisher?
Bylaw 2007-112, a bylaw set the levy and rates of taxation for the city purpose. I have already indicated that I will not support an increase in taxes.
So noted, thank you.
I have similar comments.
So noted. Okay, all those in favor? And the two noes opposition, thank you very much.
Bylaws 2007-106 to 2007-114, we had a first pass.
Motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading, Council Peter Angelo, seconded by Council Maves. You've heard the motion, any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion, all those opposed? You have two opposed?
Three.
Are you opposing it?
I agree.
Okay.
Bylaw 2007-106 to 2007-114, we had a second and third, and it's a pass.
Thank you. Any new business this evening? Yes, Council Aiononi, Council Diodati, Council Peter Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand we have a service delivery review committee, don't we, made up of staff and members of council? I was just wondering, are the council members invited to the Service Center tomorrow for the service delivery review to the employees? And have the, have the representatives on that committee been invited?
Mr. McDonald?
Your Worship, the councilors, the committee actually is not invited. The purpose of it is really to kick off a particular process with water wastewater, so it's simply a meeting to speak to the staff, to make sure they understand the process, and we go from there. But the committee is aware that we're doing water wastewater, the committee is aware of the process, and they're aware that part of the process is informing staff, that they would not be participating or involved in that meeting.
Council Diodati?
Just, I know you touched on earlier, Your Worship, in regard to this Seven Wonders Fund, to give an update, first, our compliments to Dale Moore, who's been working a butt-off on our own time to get things done, and Ain Meyer for the 50th reunion, giving keeps going, the banners around the city are recycled, Ain Meyer 50th banners, all the high schools in town have put the message on the marquees, newspapers, been a big sport, radio station, now we've got the newspapers and the radio stations in Niagara Falls, New York jumping on board, helping us, because I mean, it's basically, it's Niagara Falls, and whichever side of the river you run, it's still Niagara Falls. The last that we were aware, on Friday, on Friday, the website went down for CBC. Coincidentally, right after we took the commanding lead, the website went down, and of course, it's been down all weekend and all day today. We don't know when it's going to be up and running. I did call CBC, they did inform me that, it's CBC, he wants, and they said that it went down, and they're hoping to have it up and running today, which it hadn't been the last time I checked. However, the voting does close this Thursday. Those were the rules as of Friday. Now, as you know, they changed them from time to time, and apparently, there will be judges in the end, and so this is, it's kind of a quasi-contest, unscientific, but just the same, I know it's important that we lead this, and that you should rest assured that everybody in the city is rallying behind it. The latest rules are that you can change, you can vote multiple times. I know it's changed a couple of times, but the latest, you really need to tune in to be up on the rules, but the latest rules are that you can... be up on the rules, but the latest rules are that you can vote multiple times. So, if and when the website is up and running again, please vote multiple times, so long as the rules continue to say that you can do that. And do that until the end of Thursday, the 31st of May, so long as they don't change that date. Just to let you know, we have been working hard within the rules, and appreciate your support, and I know it's very confusing, but they've been consistently inconsistent. Thank you.
And I'd just reconfirm that, both points, and I know our staff here at City Hall has been in touch with CBC as well, and the same response, and it hasn't been up yet today. But thank you very much for your efforts in creating this whole campaign, so we appreciate that. Councillor, yes?
Worship, in the paper today, there was something about one of the judges was making comments, that's not the be-all and end-all, that the judging will, you know, if we don't win that, we still have a chance. The judges will make the determination.
That's correct. That's correct. Okay, councillor Peter Angel?
Thanks, Your Worship. I just wanted to remind council and the public that this Wednesday is going to be the meeting held in council chambers in regards to the landlord and tenants' water bill collections. And originally, Your Worship, I think that staff had put the meeting time, I think, from 2:00 to 4:00, and that's been changed now, Your Worship, so that people can come after work. The meeting will now be from 5:00 to 7:00, so hopefully councillors can make it out and landlords as well to give us their comments. So noted, thank you. Councillor Kariel?
Your Worship, I don't know whether anyone else, but I'd like to congratulate councillor Aynoni. Cut up the other morning quite early and turned on the television, and there was councillor Aynoni on Good Morning America. It's a Niagara Falls sign, Your Worship, standing right beside us and at the end, and I think that was a tremendous proof for our city, for her to get our sign there on Good Morning America.
Thank you again for your efforts, councillor Aynoni, appreciate that. Councillor Thompson?
I do, I actually expect to have a shortage of tourism as well as the marketing on behalf of councillor Aynoni. I have a petition, I have a petition that I'd like to hand to the clerk, has to do with the traffic matter, and through the chairs, we will deal with it. The extension of St. Paul Street going down into St. David's, let's read the whole. Anyway, there's 160, 170 residents in the neighborhood of St. David's, the Eagle Valley Golf Course on the other side, and you have a two-lane roadway going there with a left turn at the top of Mountain Road. The petitioners, which I will hand to the clerk, are very concerned about the speeding that is ongoing there, and this is not new. I recall two or four years ago, this being brought up on several occasions with respect to the traffic concerns with respect to right-hand and left-hand turns into subdivision and into the golf course. It's an extremely dangerous situation. The cars travel at a high rate of speed, and I don't think the lowering the speed limit is going to resolve the problem, however, that's what the petitioners are asking for. Along with that, has to be stringent police surveillance. However, I think I would like to have a motion to also refer this to the region to look at a right-hand and left-hand turn into the Eagle Valley and also into the subdivision. Cars who are making the left turn coming out of the city and going down towards St. David's have to actually stop, and the cars are speeding along behind them, and there's been many accidents there, and it's going to continue. So, I would like to have this researched by our staff and a firm recommendation. A light is probably the best way, and I think that's what I remember Patty suggested several years ago. So, I'd like to make a motion that refer this petition to the staff and inform the region to see if we can come up with some solutions with respect to this matter.
Motion by councillor Thompson, is there a second to the motion? Councillor Kariel, any further discussion on the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried, thank you.
I have one other concern that's brought to my attention with respect to animals and the keeping of animals, dogs in particular. We had many emails and complaints about people in the rural area who were being approached about having four dogs when the bylaw says they should be free. There is, and I will deem give this to the clerk to put to the appropriate staff, a complaint where there are, in fact, six dogs in one house, and the people who have been putting up with, obviously, the feces in the yard, the odor, the noise, and the other problems associated with that, called the Humane Society, and the individual at the Humane Society indicated, wow, these people have a kennel license. I'd like to have a report back to determine when, if it's the municipality's responsibility, Humane Society's responsibility to grant anybody a kennel license in a residential area. I find it hard to believe that anybody could have a kennel license, and his response to the complaint was, well, this slipped through back in 2002. I'm not aware of any support from any council or anybody else with respect to kennel licenses in residential areas. We have a bylaw that says three animals, there's six, and like that, to be investigated, and also, whether there, in fact, is any opportunity for somebody in a residential area to get a kennel license. So, I'll give the particulars to the clerk, and I would ask for a report back regarding the Humane Society and license thing with respect to kennels.
Is there a second to the councillor Thompson's motion? Councillor Fisher, is there a second to the motion? Okay, any discussion to the motion? Having seen none, we call the vote, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Any other new business? Motion to adjourn, moved by councillor Diadati, seconded by councillor Peter Angel, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you.